Well, good evening and to anybody listening at home, thanks for joining us tonight. It's kind of eerie not having people in the audience here, but we all know what's going on and it's for the betterment of the community that we keep people away from each other at this time. There will be more discussion about that in a little bit, but at this time we want to start the meeting. If you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Fluharty.
Here.
Miza.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
I just want to make one little announcement for the public that may be watching us tonight, that we will be answering, have the ability to answer your questions, but being this is a public meeting, if you email us with your comments, you must have your name, your address, and your comment. We will not answer anonymous because it is a public meeting. And with that, Mike, what is that website they can sign in on?
You can email directly to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov for any questions or concerns throughout this meeting, and we will read those and respond accordingly.
Thank you. And council, you have the minutes of the work session of March 2, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, and motion for acceptance by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Miza.
Epstein.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 2, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Fluharty, second by Janudas. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Miza.
Epstein.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And under old business, ordinance number 9765-20, authorizing the city manager to purchase one 70 horsepower walk behind Kubota diesel concrete saw with a 30-inch guard from Colony Hardware Corporation and declaring an emergency. And we would like to do that on third reading, and motion for suspension by Miza, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Miza.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a piece of equipment that was budgeted for. It's actually utilized to obviously open cut the ruinways, to repair water main breaks, sewer repairs, and synch clothes. It's our recommendation, we move forward with the purchase.
And motion for suspension by Miza, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Miza.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janudas. Again, Mike?
Which one are we on, Mayor? 976620?
Yes.
Okay. Did I read it? An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract, I'm sorry, was they answering, not answering, but responding to the text, with AC Lawn Care and Landscaping being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and declaring an emergency. And then if you could just explain that, you could go down.
Yes. Mike, do you want to explain this?
Yes, this was a, this contract is for all of our maintenance to, a grass cutting contract, maintenance to other properties that we own throughout the city. A lot of times when dealing with bank or foreclosed properties, that following various notices that have to go out, we need to order those to be cut. This is what this contract is for. We went ahead with the bidding, we received two bids. After reviewing it, it is our recommendation, the lowest or the most responsible bidder being AC Lawn Care and Landscaping. We recommend that contract.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Miza.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
And reports. Before we get into reports, I would like to just mention that, I want to give kudos to our city manager and his team and the administration and how they've handled this coronavirus situation. Mike has been giving us updates, been publishing things on our city websites since the third week of February. He's been in it from the beginning. We get daily updates. I'm on the phone constantly with Mike. He's keeping us abreast, and I think everything they're doing, the administration is to this point, is right on what they should be doing in accordance with the state of Ohio guidelines, and they are just doing a phenomenal job. And first, I want to thank you guys truly from the bottom of my heart, what you're doing with the sake of the city, at the very soul of what you're doing. And I certainly appreciate that. And during your report, I'd like you to go into a little more detail on what we're doing with this coronavirus. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. It works. Thanks, Holland. Got the email. Just a little test, and I did get the text, so thank you. Real quickly, and I will pass those on, Mayor, those comments, we appreciate that. We have a great team, and obviously they've been putting in a lot of work, and there's been a lot of, obviously some disruptions going on that we all know of, but as well as some planning. There are going to be a lot of changes taking place, a lot of changes that are going to be an inconvenience. There's a lot of changes that we're going to hear about over the next couple of days, additional changes from the state of Ohio. Regardless of what those are, I can sit here and say that, you know, the safety, the wellness, and the general well-being of our residents, our businesses, and our staff remain our number one priority. We will continue to deliver our essential services that will not change, police, fire, public utility, service. Those services are going to continue. Are we making some adjustments on how we deliver some of those services? Absolutely. Are we looking at some adjustments with staffing? Absolutely. All of those we will convey to the public via social media. Please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, constant contact, and follow our website. As far as our website, one of the things that went live today, and it's going to continue to include information, is the city of Bedford designated a specific page, I should say a specific department, for almost like a clearinghouse of information. And I'm urging all of you that have questions about this situation, because it's changing by the hour, if you have concerns, if you are in need of something, go to that department on our website. There's going to be informational items on there that we've started putting out two to three weeks ago to educate yourself further on the facts, not fear of the virus. There's going to be information from the residence tab that you can click on if you are a family. There's information of the school lunches that are provided, the schedule of pickup. There's also going to be information on the programs that the state and federal government are offering for our businesses that are affected. There's going to be links on there for the unemployment, which for those of you that don't know, that unfortunately may be affected. Some of those guidelines have since been reduced as far as the timing to apply. The seven-day window has been removed. Go to the website. There'll be an information piece there for our seniors if you want to sign up for wellness checks. We will follow that, we will contact you, and we will perform those wellness checks. So again, that website, look for more information to be put on there. As the days pass and more information becomes available, as our services either change, or if there's more that we can offer, we will put that on there. So again, it's under our website, bedfordoh.gov, and then if you go under departments, actually there's a direct link, I believe, on the homepage. Councilwoman Rhodes indicated. Who else helped with this? Thank you. It's right on the homepage, you can click on that, and our, the purpose of it is to be a clearance, clearinghouse of information to advise the public of. So again, I can't stress enough to go to that. As far as our business, and you've seen some of the changes that we put out in my letter last week, but we are effective immediately, and Frank's going to mention, I'm sure, some of this. Our income tax services, we are going to cease in-person tax assistance. We're urging people to pay their water bill online. In all intensive purposes, we want the public to begin doing their business with the city of Bedford for the time being, either online, over the phone, via email. We want to stop the public from coming into City Hall. In all intensive purposes, City Hall in essence will be closed. With that being said, you're still going to be able to call individual departments, you're still going to be able to have email responses. We are going to respond accordingly. We will have access to that. There will be some of our staff that actually quote goes mobile as we try to reduce our workforce. We are following the directives issued by the CDC, by the State Department of Health, and by the Cuyahoga County Department of Health. And anybody that has questions, those are your three areas to go to for further information. And we, again, post that stuff on our website. So again, if there's, for the sake of doing business, please go online. Please do it via, over the phone or email, because over the next couple of days, there's going to be some drastic changes in how we staff City Hall and how we conduct business. I'm not going to pretend to have all the answers, but if you contact me in my office, I'll be able to provide as much up-to-date information as possible on the situation as far as how we're delivering services, and should there be any other changes in the immediate future, we'll be open and honest with that from the get-go. Lastly, I do want to mention, it was put out there today on our social media and our website, and you can go to our website, but there is a new Code Red system. And even if you've been registered previously in the years prior, you have to re-register for the new service. Go on our website, you can enter your information on there, and you'll be on our new Code Reds emergency alert, and if we need to, we'll utilize that in the future. Again, we will continue to deliver those essential public services from a fire department standpoint, EMS, police, public utility, and service. Look for drastic changes in some other ways that we do business. And again, I'm urging everybody in Bedford to follow the governor, follow his recommendations. We have to follow the experts on this. We must limit that curve that you're hearing about. We must halt that curve or the spike. We have a hospital in town, and it's imperative that we follow some of those directives. If you have any questions or concerns, you can email me or contact me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Law Director.
Yes, I was just looking for a memo that I received from Tom Day, our clerk of courts, regarding Bedford Municipal Court. The city may not be open fully. The courts are planning to be open from, all traffic criminal and civil hearings in the morning will be continued if they're in the afternoon, from March 17 through March 27. So they'll be open for the morning hearings, and so if you have a morning hearing, you need to show up, or a video arraignment, you need to show up. But any afternoon hearings will be continued to a later date. You'll receive notice via mail. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
With the coronavirus, you know, based on mandates from the governor's office, the CDC, as Mike said, in the best interest of the public health and welfare of our employees, and we decided to close the department window at the city tax department. This way we would not have the in-person preparation of city income tax returns. Very similar to what regional income tax agencies done, city of Cleveland with CCA's department, other places also. The city does provide other means of allowing you to do your income tax. We have the online system. We also have where you just register, you'll get a PIN number, you make that, you create that, and there's a tutorial online to help you with that. Also, when you're filing, we can pay online, and you can also complete all your returns and everything. We have an address that we want you to send that to. Please do not drop the tax returns and papers into the parking lot water box. We do have another lockbox which we prefer to have you send it to. This allows us to do electronic reception of your data through the banks, and at the same time allow our employees to post from that to your accounts, which we've been doing for the past, oh, easily 15, 20 years. So that's nothing new for us, but it does allow for a paperless system and a lot safer for our employees. We do have that issue occasionally of someone who has, uses our department and really can't calculate, that being seniors that would need a little help who do work. If that's the case, you'd be able to put those W2s in an envelope with a letter statement saying, this is all the income that we have. Sign off on that, because we do have to have a signature, and we'll try to create that return for you. But you are still responsible for any payments up to that point in time on the filing deadline. So we appreciate your patience. We thank you for this. This is in my 30 years, we've never done anything like this. It's unprecedented, however, it's important that we follow the rules of the governor and the CDC. So we'll do the best we can for you as usual, and appreciate all your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get to the council reports, I have one thing I have to do. Not to make light of the other situation, but a couple of weeks ago, I went to a fundraiser for a little guy, Dylan. It's for you, Dylan. He's, he was born with a real serious lung problem, and his family had a fundraiser a couple Saturdays ago that my wife and I were able to attend, and I did win the Irish basket, being tomorrow is St. Patty's Day. I promised the family I would wear this tonight, just to show support for Dylan. He's been in the hospital for over six months. He's home now and doing better, but the family seemed, it still needs a lot of help and prayers. So Dylan, this is for you. He's the grandson of one of our city employees, and I promised them I would do this tonight, so that's why I have this on. And happy St. Pat's Day to all you Irish and almost Irish people for tomorrow. Thank you. And with that, we will get on to Mr. Saunders.
All right. Just wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day to all our Irish people out there. It's unfortunate because of this coronavirus problem. You can't go to a bar to drink, and you can't go to a parade tomorrow because it's been canceled. But I'm sure, if I know most of my Irish friends, you'll be partying at home. So good luck and stay safe with that. During this crisis, I just hope everybody has a little bit of patience. We know it's going to interrupt your lifestyle for a while, but we will all get through this, hopefully, and it looks like it's going to be at least several months, but let's get through it and work from there. Ward six election tomorrow has been postponed to June 2, so don't get out there and go vote tomorrow because you're going to find the building is locked. So I guess that goes for wards one, three, and five also, but we were all going to be in Ellenwood tomorrow having our own little party, I guess, but that has been canceled. Two items, and unfortunately, they're both at the same place. Burger King, we've been having issues at Burger King, especially due to drive-through. Apparently, people are getting angry with the people in the store. I don't know if it's the service itself or whatnot, but one guy left me a message, and I couldn't make it out all that much, although I think Stan probably got the same message, that they were actually crawling into the drive-through window. We might want, especially now that the kids are off for a while, and the only thing open over there is the drive-through, then maybe patrol that a couple times just to keep an eye on it. And then the other thing at Burger King is their drive apron off of Columbus Road is horrendous. They blew out several tires there. Now, they did patch it, but that's not a proper patch according to our city ordinance. So I'm hoping that we stay on to actually do the permanent repair in that area because that drive apron was really, really bad. Now, it's temporarily patched, but we need to get it done properly. Thank you.
I do, and just real quickly, because we did get some complaints about that. That was temporary. We did write them up. They were notified through our building department, and I would imagine it was weather permitting, but we'll follow up and make sure that does get addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spinks.
I just want to wish everybody out there a safe and happy St. Patrick's Day. I am wearing my green for my Irish heritage on my grandfather's side, my mother's father. I want to just let everybody know that, just like the mayor says, Mike, thank you. Kudos to you and your team for doing a fantastic job and filling us in and taking precautions to safety net our city and our residents. They become, they're number one. Just want to let everybody know that meals on wheels, we will, we are, all of us volunteers, me and Vic just notified me that, I guess he delivered today, that we are taking precautions. We are still delivering meals. We're hanging them on the doors. I do want to let everybody know that I did speak to my pastor yesterday, Pastor Mike Dennis at Church Nazarene, and we did not have church. That was kind of weird. We did have it, it was via Facebook, and it was on YouTube, so you could watch him like we do for a lot of our residents. When they're sick, they can't show up for church. So we are making sure that anybody that needs anything, I did pass out a couple of bags this weekend to some of our residents, some cereal and things, so please don't hesitate. If you need something, please reach out to one of the city or to one of your council people. I know I'll be out still. I'm off of work until definitely with my classes and shaker, so I'll be doing my work checks safely in my car. And just let us know, but I just want everybody to know, I've got something I kind of want to share. It's a little thing of things that are not canceled, and these are simple things that you can just think about and do. Going outdoors is not canceled. Listening to music is not canceled. Quality time with our families is not canceled. Reading a book is not canceled. Sharing with friends is not canceled, just as long as you're not running fever. If you share with your friends, you can talk to them on the phone. Do that. Check up on your friends. If you haven't heard of them, check up on your neighbors. If you haven't seen them, call them and make sure that they're okay. Singing out loud is not canceled. Laughing has not been canceled. Sharing hope with others has not been canceled. Let's embrace what we have in report.
Thank you. Mr. Janus.
Thank you. I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
I'd like to also say thanks to all you guys, the heads of the departments, and Mike and John and Frank for all the work you guys are doing. I also want to let everybody know that I will be in the neighborhood a lot more for the next few days because I got a little more free time, too. So you'll be seeing me either driving or walking around and checking on some of my seniors that I know that have been around a long time, and I want to make sure everybody's safe. But everybody knows, call me at 440-241-5769, or email me at councilmanfluharty@gmail.com. I can help you somehow if you need something from the grocery store or anywhere else I can help with you. Again, we're all in this together. It's uncharted waters for everybody, and it's, we don't know what's going to be in the next few months, but hopefully we'll, you know, we'll get through all this. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Miza.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Even though you're not here, we enjoy talking with you and to you and the Amherst. My first thing I'm going to say is, I'm going to give you the coronavirus hotline phone number. If we couldn't answer any questions for you, this number will get you an answer for your question. The number is 1-833-427-5634. The other bit of information is giving you the Bedford website once again, which is bedfordoh.gov. If you have any concerns or questions, you can give us, send us an email, and we will answer it as soon as possible. I would also like to thank Mike and his staff and everybody else on this day for all of us being here tonight, working on the right things for our people, and honoring and listening to what the governor would like us to do for us all not to get sick. And if you're smart, you'll stay at home when you have to be home. But if you need something, we are available, one way or another. We'll take care of things for you as best we can. Question to the city manager. I noticed today because I had an opportunity to go through the ward again. The corner of Broon and Cork Hill, I believe they're, the sidewalks all torn up there, and it's down to gravel. I believe there's a replacement of the handicap corner. Will that be done within, well, now that we have changed our schedules for a lot of things? Do you have an anticipated?
I don't, I don't have an anticipated date on that, but I will look into that and let you know this week during, when you get your report.
And another question, since it's the 16th of the month already, most water bills have been put into the drop box if not paid for in person at the water department. Do, can we still utilize the drop box outside for next month's water bill?
Yes. Yes, water.
Okay. Thank you. I was hoping you'd say yes. And lastly, I believe there was a water main break up at the top of the street of Santa Chirling Button Road last week. We had a little bit of rusted wire in the water and the pipes, but nothing was, everything was taken care of. And just wanted to know if it was completed.
Yes.
Thank you. End of report. Stay well. Stay indoors if you have to. I know it gets boring, but you'll find something good to do, believe me. Have a good night.
Thank you. And Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone. There's no one here to thank for coming, but I appreciate everyone who's watching. I don't have much tonight. It does probably goes without saying, but Bedford Downtown Alliance, all events are currently canceled while the state of emergency is in place. This goes for the garden club as well. I would also like to tell everyone, take a moment, get your neighbors' contact information, and make those calls on a regular basis, especially if your neighbors are seniors. Many of our seniors have a possibility of getting sick and not having anyone notice, and we need to make sure that doesn't happen as a community. So please make sure you do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just another point, if you think you have flu symptoms or cold, or if you think you have the virus, before you go to the hospital, don't rush into the ER. Don't call 911. Call your doctor directly. Tell them your symptoms, and let them make a determination of how to come in, because we just don't need a lot of people going into hospitals and doctors' offices needlessly.
we just don't need a lot of people going into hospitals and doctors' offices needlessly. Uh, if you're sick, definitely get help. If you have an emergency, call 911. But if you think you have a cold or the flu, uh, please just call your doctor direct and let them give you the guidance on uh, coming into their office or the ER if necessary. Please do that. And one last thing, uh, you should have all gotten your census papers in the uh, the mail this week. Uh, I just did mine today. Didn't even take 10 minutes to fill it out. Did it online, boom, send it, it's gone. It's very, very important that that gets done, and we need everybody in the city to fill that census out so we get an accurate count of who's in, how many people are in town, because it affects federal spending and federal dollars that we get. It affects the money that the schools get. And one of the biggest uh, classes of people that do not get counted are kids five and under, for whatever reason, I don't know, but they need to be counted because the census is every 10 years, and uh, that five-year-old's gonna be 15 and in high school, that, that's gonna affect them, but they're in high school. So, count them now, the infants. They're all gonna be older. All that counts, and we need an accurate count. It is totally safe and secure. No one can get that information. There's only a handful of people that can deal with it. From what I'm told, even the FBI can't go in and get the information. They just, they can give out generals. We have so many of people of this, so many people of that living in town, those kind of things. They cannot give specifics. Please, please, fill that out, get it in. We wanna have our population increase, not decrease, because increase helps uh, all of us. So, please, fill that out as soon as you get it. And there's plenty of assistance if you have a problem filling it out. There's a number to call. They'll walk you through it. Like I say, it's 10 questions. I don't think it took 10 minutes to answer it, and uh, it's a very simple thing, but very, very important. Thank you. Let's get on with business.
Ordinance number 9768-20.
It's an ordinance amending ordinance number 9738-19 so as to make additional appropriation for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2020 and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension. Spinks second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And motion for third and final. Saunders, second by Mizak. Um, Frank?
Yeah, the ordinance in front of you today is basically to appropriate all the funds that were left over from all the different grants. One of the major items is we have a large bill for workers' comp that we have to reappropriate to all the different departments. Also, uh, we had the leftover funds of community development block grant funds that we're appropriating. We have uh, our food bank, we have over $20,000 this year that we're reappropriating. Our NOPEC funds from the grants that we're receiving this year, and the rescue squad and the fire pumper need to be reappropriated. We did not spend the funds last year. Uh, that will be shortly for the ambulance and sometime late May for the fire pumper. Uh, also, we have capital repairs on water that we're looking to do on the valves, and we're gonna finish up on the Wood Creek program that's $100,000 there, and we're reappropriating all the law enforcement and CO forfeiture agency funds uh, for approval for payment in 2020. Ask council to approve that this evening.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9769-20. There we have it. One second there, just looking for that piece. I don't have it there. I don't have it.
All right, it's an ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and Apex Holdings, Inc., and authorizing the execution of that agreement by the city manager and declaring an emergency.
We'd like to put this on first reading. I have a motion for such. I wrote, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9770-20.
Which is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with J. Auto Group to purchase one 2020 GMC Terrain vehicle and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension. Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a vehicle that is being purchased, um, actually it's for the Bedford Municipal Court, um, and the contract through J. is through the state cooperative purchasing contract. It's our recommendation we move forward with that purchase for the court.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9771-20.
Which is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the village of Moreland Hills for use of the Bedford City jail facilities and declaring an emergency.
And I need a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizak. Mike?
Uh, the contract of Moreland Hills, this is a new contract. Um, this is to uh, we will provide jail services for the community, just like the other contracts. Obviously, it's only if we have the capacity to do so. Um, we don't anticipate a large influx, um, and it's under the same guidelines and uh, contract terms as all of the other communities in which we house prisoners for.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9772-20.
Which is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Selco Fire and Security for installation of a new height definition surveillance system throughout the municipal building and declaring an emergency.
So, I wish to put that on first reading and motion for such by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9773-20.
Which is an ordinance amending section 151.171 of our administrative code and declaring an emergency.
And I need a uh, motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. And uh, Frank?
Yeah, this ordinance actually is an update of our 2005 ordinance. Uh, laws have changed since that time regarding military personnel and lease. Uh, it addresses the wages that we pay to people, also their medical, and uh, and how we handle the payments and the night with hours earned by the military. Uh, so ask council to pass that this evening, and it does bring us up to date on the higher advice code too.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And ordinance number 9774-20.
Approving and authorizing the council to more readily make decisions of an emergency nature if significant numbers of council members cannot be present during the current crisis and to grant the city manager extraordinary authority to expend funds of the city for certain purchases of goods and services in order to reduce the need for council meetings and the duration of such meetings during the present crisis and declaring an emergency.
And I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. And uh, this is a authorization for council so we can do business should members of council uh, become ill or quarantined or whatever, and we can't have a full quorum here. This is sanctioned by the state that we can do this to lower uh, our quorum for voting. So, if only four people are here, three will be authorized to do a, a majority vote and to pass legislation. We're, we're doing this in anticipation, not anticipating people getting sick, but just in case, and it will allow us to keep the business of the city moving forward. Without that, if there's not seven of us here or six of us here, legislation stops and it gets put off, and this way we can keep the city running during this crisis. It also gives the city manager authorization to increase the level of spending that he can do without having council vote on it. And uh, it also has a 90-day limit. So, in 90 days, we will revisit this. If it's no longer needed, it'll be off the books or even sooner if it's not needed. But for right now, it's to help streamline our government, get things passed when necessary, because we still have to do the, the business of the city no matter what's going on. So, this will make it easier. Uh, the city manager has assured us he will keep us in the loop. I know he will, goes without saying, and uh, it'll just, just make us uh, more efficient. So, uh, I hope it's something we don't have to use, but it's there if we do, and again, it's only for 90 days, so, and if you wanna add anything.
And in fact, I just wanted to add one thing there. Obviously, um, some of those spending examples would exercise the powers with other political subdivisions for the product or services relating to public utilities, or in the case of urgent emergency, or for the immediate protection of public property and/or public safety. Any other items, we would fall under our normal purchasing guidelines. And again, these are only for the next 90 days. Um, obviously, we wanna take precautionary measures. Should something happen that is unforeseen and unfortunate, we wanna still be able to provide the essential services which we stated we will continue to do. Um, we wanna make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position to come to a halt legally during council proceedings.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Resolution number 2546-20.
It's an emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to accept one Ohio memorandum of understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And motion for third and final, Saunders, second by Rhodes. Uh, Mike, or, or do you want this, John?
Is this still over there?
No, this is the opioid.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can take it.
Okay.
Um, this is in regards to the state opioid settlement and pending, or, I'm sorry, the current lawsuit. Um, through working with the OML, the AG's office, we have to pass this memorandum of understanding in order to participate in any settlement should they become available. Um, obviously, any settlements or any funds that by doing so would become available to the city of Bedford, obviously, they would be earmarked for certain things as far as treatment programs or other types of items that obviously the AG's office and that would be laid out in any type of settlement. This basically ties us into that, that should there be a settlement and should any funds become available, we will be part of that. And we would ask that that be passed immediately, um, so we can send that down to Columbus.
Good. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Mizak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
That brings us to our hearing of citizens, which we usually end with. Uh, if you have a comment online to our city manager here, please, you have to give your name, your address, and your comment, and uh, we, we cannot answer anonymous comments because this is a public meeting. Thank you. Do we have some?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and just read these.
And if some are similar, you could, I just.
Sure. Uh, the first one's just a comment, um, from Helen Briggs, 149 Graham Boulevard. Thank you to Mayor Cochi and city manager Malice and all of Bedford City Council for using the technology and resources at the disposal to help keep us all healthy during a very challenging time. While we are waiting to come through to the other side of this epidemic, let's show everyone what a great community we have here in Bedford. Let's check in on our neighbors. Let's make sure we are all doing well and help each other out wherever we can. Thank you, Helen. Um, I think that hits it on the head, I mean, just speaking, um, that we, that is one of the things that make us a great community. Uh, Helen and I appreciate the comments, and again, I mean, in line with what everybody's been saying, check on your neighbors. If you have a senior that you know that lives down the street, even if you don't know them, introduce them, introduce yourself to them. And again, in line with what everybody's been saying, check on your neighbors. If you have a senior that you know that lives down the street, even if you don't know them, introduce yourself to them. We appreciate, I appreciate, and all that department has and City Council appreciates everybody's cooperation, their understanding and partnership during what is obviously unprecedented times. But there's no doubt, I know, that as a community, we'll get through it. It's gonna be together, it's gonna be with some flexibility and with some common sense. So appreciate the comment, Heather. Mayor, did you want to add anything to that?
Oh, thank you, Helen, for your comments. We have another one.
Yep. The other one, Tony Boersma from 45 Tarbell. I'm gonna read it, and I guess I'll answer each individual one if that's okay, and this is the first, so if any of the council after must have commented as well. Says, "I have four things, but first, Don just said that Ellenwood would be locked tomorrow, but Governor DeWine got blocked and the election is still on. Is that the case?" What we do know, Tony, and for the public, that there was an intent to block. It was blocked, but right now, the judge's decision has been appealed to the Supreme Court, and that decision is currently being decided on. What I can tell you is there's nothing that any of us here, we don't have that answer. They're waiting for the Supreme Court decision, so stay tuned. Obviously, follow that on the news, follow it on social media, make sure you get an accurate source. Don't just follow, you know, a news station. I say that because CNN falsely reported a story earlier today. So if you're gonna follow something, make sure it's an accurate source, and that's the only comment I have right here right now. It was blocked, it was overturned, and here we are, obviously, awaiting a Supreme Court decision.
Mike, would we be able to add it to the homepage of the website when it's finally decided so that people have somewhere they can go and check?
Yeah, when we do know, we'll put it up there, and then probably, as far as a more timely response, look at either our Facebook or Twitter page or Twitter feed. We'll go ahead and get that out as soon as possible as well.
Mike? If the Supreme Court overturns, so they overturn, polls do open at, what, 6:00 a.m., so the announcement's gonna have to come through pretty quickly.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting. I know I'm talking to a staff member now as far as our staffing arriving to open, for instance, Ellenwood. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with that as it unfolds, Tony.
But there's nothing set up, is there?
No, there is not. They posted something when they got the admission of it, so it's gonna be tricky.
It's gonna be a mess.
You know, again, in our comments, I think it's gonna be, let's get through this with flexibility and cooperation, and, you know, that's the only answer we have right now.
And I would say also to follow our local news channels, not CNN or anybody else else, just our local Ohio stations.
Big point. It says, "I apologize," I'm gonna continue his comment, "I apologize that these things have been brought up before, and I understand currently we're in a crisis, and that is the most important thing for the city currently. One, the coming soon sign at Meadowbrook for Mazda is hanging down and looks incredibly trashy. When we get it removed or replaced, it is a terrible welcome to the city currently." We'll touch base and look at that. I think, obviously, they're making some significant strides with the building. In addition, look for our new signage, our new city signage, our gateway signs, our wayfinding. All of those locations have since been marked, and those are gonna start going up shortly, too, and that'll obviously improve all over. We'll look into this one that you're referencing and try to touch base with them. Secondly, has there been any movement on the Moon Glow property? We've discussed the Moon Glow property last fall and last winter, I probably should say respectively last winter. Couple of the main priorities were, before we really had that property being actively marketed, for instance, with a broker, we obviously wanted to take care of some of our infrastructure through the last fall. We had Dominion over there with it tore up. We installed the water line, we put in about $1.4 million project where we put the water line in. We're now waiting for Cuyahoga County to come in and do their portion of the infrastructure, as well as the state of Ohio, and the bridge there, the old stone bridge, is going to be reconstructed. That is in our plans to currently market that. I could say we have had a couple of different individuals in the restaurant business out to tour that. Again, we all know what the news are and some of those ramifications with the decision yesterday as far as restaurants and bars. Obviously, I think that's gonna play into other people's decisions, but we will look towards actively marketing it and most likely bringing a broker on sometime in the future. Three, I see that there are new businesses downtown and others coming, some leaving. Are there any prospects for the other vacant spaces, and has the city looked into allowing pop-up type shops?
Can I answer that one?
Yep, go ahead.
So in terms of those vacant properties in our downtown area, those are privately owned. We have been trying to encourage our landlords to look into pop-up type situations. They have not been extraordinarily receptive to that. We've had a little bit. You may have noticed next door to the antique shop, while it was vacant, they allowed the antique shop to move in there, which was a nice use of that space. But we do have to remember that a lot of these properties are privately owned, so it's not necessarily a city decision on that.
One second, Tony, you have one more, and I just gotta navigate my screen here. And fourth, and this one is relevant to the current situation, the store shelves are empty of staples and even items that aren't staples. I think this is a good time to look at ourselves as a city and think that, should we live at the whim of panics and irrationality, or should we all strive to be more self-sufficient? The city likes to brag about providing its own water. Why not provide its own food? Residents should be able to grow their own food in their yards, front and back. Also, they should be able to raise chickens and other livestock without reason. Cities surrounding Bedford allow this. We could model after or even completely copy their ordinances. It would be a relatively easy operation, and it could be regulated to control the bad apples. I have brought this up before. There is a local Facebook group that is in favor of this. It's called Legalized Chickens in Bedford, Ohio, and currently has 93 members. Thank you for your time. Let's get some chickens.
Anybody else?
Nope, I'm, I'll be hitting refresh here. Just those two, just those two comments, and I appreciate both of you utilizing them.
But it's nice to know that it worked.
It works.
And maybe we could see about incorporating this on a regular basis, too. Especially during these next few months, and maybe even forever, just to allow more people access. We thank, thank you for your comments. And. Yes.
We have a contact that talked to the Board of Elections, one of the supervisors, Dave Wondolowski. They're still waiting to see if any action by the court, you know, if something, they grant a stay or they make a decision. So it's highly possible that they will, I'm sure they will, so stay tuned. That was literally a minute or two ago, so the Board of Elections is waiting.
Hold.
Mayor.